Welcome, everybody, to our City Council meeting tonight, February 23rd. And if we will, can we go ahead and do our silent moment here? And then Mr. Payne is going to lead us in the pledge, if you can possibly stand.
Join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we adopt bids in, I think we've got a couple of people we want to recognize. We've got privilege to have Dr. Newell with us here tonight from Kannapolis City Schools. And I think Ms. Dixon has somebody she wants to recognize.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Sanaya Wade with us. She is a student at the Cabarrus College of Life Sciences, and she's here. She's interested in municipal government moving forward, and so we just welcome her here for her observation.
Okay, council, we have on a, we need an adoption on this agenda.
May I move for approval?
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to move to poll.
Wait a minute, we need a second here.
Second.
Second, Ms. Dixon, all in favor?
Now, if he's gonna...
I thought we were doing consent agenda. I'm on adoption and management.
Yeah.
You want to pull it off?
I wanted to poll some. It's off consent. Yes, from the consent, put it in the business.
We need to adopt your record. Okay. Mr. Jackson, now, do you have a second on this one? Second, all in favor? Okay, now, speakers from the floor.
A point of information, do we move the item C and put in the business agenda?
When we call for the adoption, the consent agenda.
If you would like to speak and address council, you may do so at this time, but I need one of these cards filled out. If you would like to address council, these cards are found on the table outside this room. I have a few cards now, Mayor and council, and the first speaker I have is Martin Wheeler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. I am Martin Wheeler. I am president of the All Board Carolinas Group, also part of the Carolinas Association of Passenger Trains, nonprofit. I'm speaking tonight in behalf of the Charlotte chapter of the group, which is doing an effort to try to get knowledge about the train stop situation in many of the towns along the Piedmont Corridor. We thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this. We think it's very important for the Kannapolis area. On July the 10th of 2023, the NC DOT Rail Division implemented a new train schedule, adopting additional train, a fourth Piedmont train, between Charlotte and Raleigh. But in the effort to achieve the Charlotte-Raleigh travel time of under three hours, two of the train stops were dropped on those routes, and those stops include stops in Kannapolis, Salisbury, High Point, and Burlington. Regular scheduled trip between Charlotte and Raleigh is three hours and 10 minutes. By reducing the stops, you get a speed of two hours and 58 minutes, so you save 12 minutes of time in skipping those train stops. This scheme directly affects the Kannapolis area, limits the ability to work late at the research campus here for people coming in from out of town, students returning from college in Greensboro. Durham and Raleigh must either leave at midday or wait till later in the evening, arriving here after 9:30 at night. The schedule limits day trips from Raleigh to Durham unless you're willing to get home very late. Imagine trying to take your children to the museum in Raleigh, and you can't get back home until 9:30 at night, coming back from that trip. So there are many opportunities that are lost because of this situation. We think the only way that the situation possibly could be rectified is to have all of the area representatives contact the North Carolina senators and state representatives for your area, express your concern about this, and ask them to pressure the North Carolina DOT Rail Division to consider adding these stops back. Now, we'll add that there's actually another train to be added in the next couple of years, so we certainly would hope that you wouldn't want your stops eliminated on that one as well. So what's, we feel it's important that all of us are paying for these through tax dollars, and we get the most opportunity we can through tax dollars from those in this region. We thank you for your attention and your consideration. We have provided some documentation for you to look at, and we look forward to working with you, if possible, to continue in our effort to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
The next speaker I have is Mr. Phil Goodman.
My name is Phil Goodman, 1005 Central Drive, Kannapolis. Don't want to bore you folks on the council up here, but I just feel there's a couple of things I really want to say. Number one, I want to give a hands out to Michael Rattler. I'm one of these citizens that drives around and looks for potholes and roads that need repair, and I grew up on Ruth Avenue, and Ruth Avenue is a total disaster, not your fault. I know the state's the one that directed that, but it is a disaster. And I called last Friday and talked to one of the ladies that answered the phone. She said I would turn it over, and I saw Michael at the meeting on Saturday, and I was telling him about it. They were out today and fixed the intersection at Brantley Road and Ruth Avenue with stone, crush and run stone. Those run out, the shoulder of the road was sometimes six and eight inches drop off, and with newer cars, that can mess up the front end. So I know he's probably not here, I'm not going to look around to see, but he deserves a big pat on the back and his crew, because they're the ones that get the job done. Secondly, I took advantage of the opportunity to go to the retreat meeting again this past Saturday, and overwhelmed, I think, is a good word to use. I hope there's a lot of people listening on, to this tonight from home, to see our council working together, can disagree, can have different opinions, can say, I just can't support that, but at the end of the day, come out saying, what are we doing for the betterment of our citizens and our city? That is so overwhelmingly positive, and I just want to congratulate all y'all. Like I said Saturday, you are doing what the taxpayers pay you to do, and on behalf of whoever I might represent tonight, we want to thank you very much, and just keep up the good work. And I promise you, I won't do this every week, but you guys are on a roll. The camaraderie is the word I want to use that I saw the other day, camaraderie, come together, work as a team, everybody respected, there wasn't people talking over the top of each other. You even endured the mayor's funny jokes at times, and I take my hat off to you for that. But just appreciate everything you folks are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Kelvin Wilkerson.
Good evening. My name's Kelvin Wilkerson. For those of you that don't know me, I live at 518 Walter Street in Kannapolis. I want to congratulate all of you. It's a pleasure to see new faces in here. I was so worried we weren't going to get them, but thank y'all, and I hope this new city council can do the job we need done. The old city council had a tax and spend agenda. I hope y'all don't keep that. I hope y'all throw that out the window. Most of you know that I'm against the city buses and the money spent there, and I hope that y'all look at that. And I know we can't get rid of public transportation, but let's see if we can't cut it down to where it's affordable for people to ride and affordable for the citizens to pay for. What's going on now, don't even pay the drivers, the money that's tuck in. People can afford to pay a little more to ride them. I probably pay more. I got my tag bill today. The city fee on my cars is more a year than some of these people are paying to ride the bus. That's not right. I hope y'all can do that. Another thing I had was the free concerts at the park. I don't think anybody ought to get free concerts. Nothing's free, somebody has to pay for it, and the citizens is the ones paying for all this. You know, it's not right for us to pay for concerts that we're not even coming to. I say again, congratulations, and I hope the city council will change things in this city and make it better and easier for us to pay for. I thank y'all, and I appreciate you. Most of you know me, and I usually say what I think, and I think Mr. Wilkerson can tell you that. I'm not good at public speaking, but I do, when I say something, it's coming from my head, it's in my heart, and I mean what I say, and I'm pretty upfront with what I say, too. I think Mr. Wilkerson can tell you that. Thank y'all, have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Justin Luter.
I knew I was next, because I'm here to ask for some free stuff. My name is Justin Luter, 1832 Maryland Court, Waterside Landing subdivision. I'm asking that the city consider a parcel of public land centrally located, perhaps up to an acre, for public community gardens. I think community gardens have their own value, one, they provide food for folks, they allow people to come together and build community. I think a centrally located space would be optimal for people. I know we have private lands and churches have community gardens, but if you're not practicing that faith, or if you're not comfortable in that church setting, this would be a great place for people, residents in the community, who would love to grow food but don't have the means to do so. Allow them a small parcel that the city can offer up and allow people to grow their own food, participate in a community building activity, and just be a resource for those in need. That's it.
The last card I have is for Tracy McGinnis.
I come up here to talk about the Constitution. I found out a lot, because I started studying on it. I found out that nobody that's really working in the government knows much about the Constitution. I'm asking you to uphold my rights when I try to stand on the Constitution, because I found out that, and a lot of people don't know this, but I found out every license out there is against the Constitution, because the 14th Amendment says that we all have life, the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness. Well, my liberty is I can feed myself, so I can't feed myself, not unless I pay the government. Four or five different ways to do that. If I want to go fishing, go get me a dagum fish out of a pond, I have to buy a fishing license. Well, I think that's against the Constitution, because now I can't feed myself, not unless I pay the government. I can't even go to the grocery store and get a gallon of milk, not unless I pay the government. So what I've done, I've done some research, and I found out that every license is against the Constitution. I got, I got case laws on it, Supreme Court cases and all that, but nobody seems to know nothing about it. And what's so sad about it is, is, you know, like the Fourth Amendment says, we all got to write the statute here, our fix, our papers, our names. We don't have to give our address up or nothing like that unless we're breaking law. Coming through the door today, I had to give up my name and my address and everything just to come up here to talk, and I had to get searched and all my stuff seized from me. And I didn't break no law, I just wanted to come up here and talk. So the Constitution seems like we don't have one no more, because I can't think of not one right that we have that we don't have to pay for in one way or the other. And I was just kind of hoping that... And I do got a court date coming up, and I've been there several times, and I win my cases. And every time I win my case, that brings up the city for litigation. I'm a nice guy, I don't want to do that. And I know a lot of people don't know this, so this could be new to, something to everybody, but the Constitution has been around for a long time. I would, I don't expect so much for the regular people to know it, but everybody that holds their hand up and takes an oath to it, I would expect y'all to know the Constitution, or whoever holds their hand up and do it, and that includes the cops and everything else. So when I put a tag on the back of my car, there goes my Fourth Amendment again, because any cop gets behind you, he can... And don't get me wrong, I know why we do it, it's just, it's still against the Constitution. So it's not like I'm ignorant of why we do it, but, you know, the last time I was up here and I talked about the last mayor and the city attorney, they did send somebody down there to talk to the judge about it, and, because a lot of judges don't want to listen, you know, they, they kind of got their own thing going on. But like I said, nobody knows much about the Constitution, and I'm just coming up here asking y'all to uphold my rights, you know, and that's about it. And I found out that we can't own anything, like, you're supposed to be able to own your home when you pay it off, but you don't, because if I quit paying the government every year, they tell me to pay it, then they say they can take my home from me. And now a lot of people don't know that. And I can't really much tell the difference between what the mob used to do, they used to use threats and violence against people so they could take money from people. And I don't know the difference between what the government's doing. They say the same thing, they say, if you don't pay us your money, we'll use some kind of violence against you. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and if we want to talk sometime in private, like I said, I got all the stuff already lined up for you and everything. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to consent agenda, and I think Mr. Payne now.
Yeah.
We're back to you, sir.
I move to remove item C from the consent agenda and put in the business agenda.
Second on that. Second, all in favor of removing it? Okay, we're going to move that then to item F on the business agenda, okay? So now we need to approve an amended consent agenda.
I move to...
You may do that. Mr. Daymow, all in favor? Thank you, and we're on to the business agenda now. So, let's see here, Mr. Smith, you're there already. You're getting quicker every time I look at you. Go ahead.
Well, the good news is, I only have one item for you tonight, so do have a voluntary annexation request. This property is, there's two lots, actually, 110 and 120 Homestead Avenue, located in our Rowan County portion of our ETJ. The request is by the property owners there. Nathaniel Kwan is actually one of the property owners, he actually plans to purchase the property south of this property as well. They're contiguous to one another, but they're not contiguous to our current city limits, so the request is voluntary, and it is located in our ETJ. The property is located off of the area of Homestead and C Street. It's actually southwest of Kannapolis Lake, in that particular area of the city, and we do have annexation survey in your packet. I'm trying to go with no PowerPoint before you tonight, so I'm going for mine, sorry. So what we need to do tonight is hold a public hearing on this item, and then, if you see fit, to approve the ordinance we have before you tonight. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have before or after the public hearing, Mayor.
Questions for Mr. Smith? All right, I guess I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak on this topic, please come forward now. I don't see anyone, so we're going to close it. Okay, we're going to have a motion for this ordinance.
So moved.
Mr. Payne?
Second.
Mr. Daymow, okay, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Smith? Thank you. Ms. Wong?
Good evening. So in December of 2023, the city council approved a grant for Cooperative Christian Ministry for, to go towards the purchase of the Caremore facility for the purpose of converting that to a transitional housing program. And part of that agreement included CCM providing an annual report to city council about the progress and status of that program and facility. So you should have already received that, the written report, but we have Ed Hosack here tonight to provide you more of an update and in-depth detail. I will say he provided some handouts tonight, which hopefully you have to reference, and if anyone from the public needs those handouts, they are out by that table when you enter. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's a privilege always to be before you. I want to, I want to acknowledge that tonight is an opportunity for us to celebrate a relationship between Cooperative Christian Ministry and the city of Kannapolis. Since 1987, when Kannapolis Christian Ministry became a part of Cabarrus Cooperative Christian Ministry that led us to the organization that, for many years, we've called Cooperative Christian Ministry, or CCM. In 2003, CCM sort of came of age at the closing of the mill, when many referred to and recognized CCM as the hub of the collaborative effort that happened right here in Kannapolis, where myself and hundreds, if not thousands, of others stood in line to try to reestablish insurance and whatever other benefits families needed. Since that time, I've spent 20 years as the executive at Cooperative Christian Ministry, and what a privilege that's been. During that time, or since that time, I guess you would say, CCM has grown to over 30 different properties and locations in Cabarrus and southern Rowan County, the vast majority of which are located right here in Kannapolis, many of them known only to the families that they serve. And most recently, I suppose, our administrative office, our headquarters, if you will, where my office is located on Cannon Boulevard, it's a privilege to be here and to be sharing with you today a little bit more about this relationship. So as Irene just noted, both of the documents I have in front of me are at the door on the podium, and in 2003, the city of Kannapolis and Cooperative Christian Ministry collaborated through the use of ARP funds, American Rescue Plan funds, to initiate a project that I believe we can celebrate now, and I believe our community is going to be celebrating for years to come. I want to just give you an update on, on the very busy and very challenging process we've been going through to convert a progressive retirement community, a community that has four buildings on the 5.3 acre campus, that has provided assisted living and independent living for seniors for over 30 years. But for the past two years, Cooperative Christian Ministry has been pursuing transitional housing as per our agreement with the city to reach a goal level of 75% attention to families, families with children within a five-year period. We're two years into our five-year agreement in making those conversions on the property. Part of the reason it'll take five years is, number one, we're in a regulatory environment, and so as we convert one building at a time, regulation would require that we can't mix families and seniors in licensed care in the same building, so we have to convert an entire building at a time. As we convert these buildings from senior living to facilities that can house families with children, there's much that needs to take place as it relates to serving children, even the bathrooms, there's only one bathtub on the entire campus, as you can imagine the work that's ahead of us there. Making changes in the kitchen, which will go from serving a very common meal to 48 folks to potentially someday serving over 70 different individuals, young and old, intergenerational campus with a variety of menus. So we've made improvements to the kitchen, some upgrades, we've upgraded the kitchen staff and reinforced that. We've had to change a hot water system, because a whole lot more baths and showers are coming down the road. The security system, the septic system, Caremore was on a, was on five septic systems that we thought would last a little longer than they did, but when they started showing some age, rather than investing in those systems, we converted to the city's system, which was a significant project, a significant undertaking, but nevertheless, that's been accomplished. I want to show you a few things as we go through, so that you can follow with me. You do have a picture in your package that represents Grace Place at Caremore, and anyone would have that who has the package. And you can see on the campus, the 5.3 acres going all the way back to the tree line. The building on the right, you might say it's at 3 o'clock in the picture, is the building that has been converted to the Grace Place Apartments. There are six apartments there. That space has been converted, I wish we had the ability to show you beautiful pictures of that space. We actually were able to move our first families in, two families, in June of 2025, six months ahead of schedule. The reason we were able to do that is because these two families had middle school-aged children, and so some of the conversions that are necessary for young children weren't necessary for these families to move in. Since that time, we've had three families in the program. Our fourth family is getting ready to move in at the end of this month, the beginning of March. One of those families has already graduated, she found full employment, and was able to secure housing near her new job. Part of our challenge is developing the programming and learning how to combine a multi-generational campus and the facilities and the services that we're providing. But we're moving ahead. In this picture, there's, there's a house behind the main facility, sitting next to the storage buildings, that's the carriage house. The carriage house residents have been progressed into the assisted living environment in the main building. That house is now empty, and by the end of March will be renovated and converted and ready to receive women and children. So we're very excited about that, for six more beds to be coming available. Part of the challenge that we're working through as we do this, each, each one of these, when we free up six apartments in one of these buildings, we, we take $30,000 a month out of the revenue stream for this operation. So to date, we've taken 12 rooms out, or $60,000 a month, out of the revenue stream. Now, that's where we're heading. Eventually, as these families move in, there will be some revenue, as these families will pay a rent according to their ability and where they are in the program. But as you can see, it's something that we need to do gradually while we continue to invest. To date, well, when we purchased the property, we purchased it for a price of $5 million. The ARP funds allocated by the city was a grant for 3,000, and CCM signed a promissory note for two, excuse me, for 3 million, and CCM signed a promissory note for 2 million to be paid at a million dollars a year. It was paid off in December of 2025. We're very excited about that. We've invested 572,000 additional dollars in some of the conversions and improvements, getting ready for children to enter this space with their families. In addition to that, well, included in that is a playground that will be completed by the end of March. The playground itself, let me just go back to the picture, if you will. In the very middle of the property, there's a little white building and a metal building behind it, along the fence line. Both of those buildings have been removed, old storage buildings, they weren't serving any programmatic purpose, and the fence has been removed to be moved backwards, backwards on the property, so that we're creating, on the right-hand side, along the side of the property, the new playground. About a $75,000 playground will be installed by the end of March. We're creating play space back there for the children, and the children will be able to access all of that, moving down the right-hand border of the property, which is a safe space for them. So that is part of 572,000. Additionally, it's our goal to establish inline generators in this property. We had hoped to do it before now, but the septic system took precedence on that. But nevertheless, when we complete the inline generators on this property, CCM's total capital investment in this property will exceed, in fact, the city's investment, and we are most grateful for the partnership that you have created with us. Just to note about many of these families, three of these three families who have been in the program, one of who has already graduated in this period that was actually ahead of schedule, all three of these mothers experienced a surgery during this first six-month period. We don't... We don't normally expect that, except that often when, when single moms are facing crisis and keeping, just keeping their head above water and their children housed, they tend to neglect their own health situation. And so to find stability, to find peace of mind, to find safety, allows them to begin to address the challenges they face. Taking the time to have these surgeries would not have been possible under the environment that they were previously in, just trying to keep their head above water. And we're thrilled to be a part of that. They have paid off debt. They have improved their credit. They have paid old tax bills, maintained cars, and even purchased a new car. And that's what this program allows them to do once they find stability. So we're very pleased with where we are right now. Mom with two children will be moving up from our Mothers and Children's Facility, like I said, at the first of March or during that first week. And we will continue to build the program, bring the families in, as we develop this program and become more accustomed to children and their moms being in this environment. So once again, the Carriage House will come online in March. We're excited about that. That will allow us the opportunity for 12 families on the campus. We'll continue to work toward that. We're well on schedule for our five-year goal to be at 75%. And just to note that perhaps is of interest to some in the room, because CCM serves seniors as well. In fact, many of you know that senior adults are the fastest-growing population in Cabarrus County of folks who are in housing crisis. We intend, the Lord willing, to continue doing licensed care in the main building of Caremore as these other buildings transition. We believe that it's important to our community and that for many of the graduates of our program or folks who have been in our program, assisted living is the next step. And we have lost over 150 assisted living beds in Cabarrus County in the past year. We do not need to zero that number. And so we hope to continue to do that as a little bit of a sustainability model to help support the campus. And you'll see that as part of what we're doing. We had the privilege of recognizing Ms. Corinne Cannon, as you did so appropriately not long ago. But over a year ago, she and I celebrate the same birthday. And on her birthday, on her 105th birthday, she's 40 years ahead of me, we started the Corinne Cannon Scholarship at Caremore. We now have three residents at Caremore who are receiving licensed assisted living care, who would not otherwise be able to afford it without the Corinne Cannon Scholarship. We are very excited about telling those stories and building that scholarship fund so that we can provide another kind of care to folks who would not have access to it in our community. With that, I truly would like to entertain any questions about the progress there. I do have another something that I can't wait to share with you, but I don't want to change the subject before you're ready.
Any questions for Mr. Hosack? These two ladies, Ms. Dixon, we'll just take an order down the line here.
You want me to go first, sir?
Let her go. Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you for your presentation and for the service that you provide to our community. I have two questions. Are all the adult residents, are they employed prior to being residents at Caremore in your transition program?
So the answer to that question is yes. Presently, the Grace Place at Caremore program is located as a third step that a family goes through in our Path to Stability model. So what we call My Father's House, the annex, which is located at Memorial Baptist Church in Kannapolis on their campus, is our entry point, where four or five mothers and their children can enter our program. And that first, that first six months is a very challenging time of adjustment with some intensive and very specific types of care management. From there, moms will often graduate with their children to our mothers, what we call our Mothers and Children's Facility, which is located in Concord across from the Boys and Girls Club, where they have another year to sort of choose direction and gain momentum and develop some disciplines and pay off debt and those types of things. They graduate from the Mothers and Children's Facility into Grace Place at Caremore right now. We will open up that model a bit in the future, but presently, that's a very successful model. And so all three of the families and four now are effective for the one who's coming in. Mom is employed, stable. The kids are stable in school and performing. They're part of our tutoring program. And they're, they've developed many of the disciplines that we're looking for to be in an environment such as this.
Thank you. And my second question is, do all of your residents who, that are employed, do they have their own transportation, or do you provide transportation for them?
Presently, all of them do. Now, we recognize that we have, we have mothers coming through the Mothers and Children's Program right now who do not, who utilize both public transportation and Uber or Lyft in order to accomplish all that they need to accomplish. We do, Cooperative Christian Ministry, each one of our congregate facilities has a van, a transportation van, and we do provide some specialized or urgent transportation for the residents in our program, so we can work with them. Obviously, as they come into the program, some are employed or some are not, and becoming employed is a priority in our program. By the time they've been with us six months, typically, they are employed. Some, in that second phase, realize that the job they have isn't going to help them reach their goals, and it's time to start over. And what, that's what they get an opportunity to do in the second phase of our program. I tell you all of this to tell you that becoming employed, paying off debt, and improving credit are all priorities after stabilizing health and stabilizing school. But very early on, if they do not have a car, then we begin, begin working with them and educating them on what it takes to own a car, what the cost of owning a car is, getting their driver's license if they don't have one. We had one recently got her driver's license. And then helping them get to the place where they can, in fact, provide their own transportation. There are a number of challenges and disciplines as it relates to owning a car that you and I perhaps don't think about, but if you're the only one in the family or only one in the community who owns a car, you are very vulnerable to be taken advantage of relationally in terms of providing your time and your gas, and it can interrupt life tremendously. So it's an important step, and it's one that really needs to be educated before they step into that world if they, if they haven't been there before. So now, we had some wonderful conversations prior to purchasing Caremore with the Transit Authority here, and like the idea of developing some micro-transit opportunities. We think there's room for that, especially out on the parkway. And so we will continue to be creative as we develop our own solutions, but I think there's more out there that we can do as a community.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hosack, thank you again for being here. Appreciate the work that CCM has been doing for years in this community. It's really made a difference. It's what makes this area special when you have groups like you that take care of people. One of the questions I did want to ask you is, have you found that the sense of community has helped among, like, those single moms, especially, like you said, they had medical needs? Has that been kind of also some of the support that has helped them while they are there?
Yeah, so this is, so Grace Place at Caremore is, is our third congregate-type environment. The other two have been in place for quite some time, although this is the first one where they have their own apartment, as opposed to living in a room and sharing bathrooms and that type of thing. It is critical. It is absolutely critical. And we have some, we have some videos out that folks can see moms just sharing their story on a couch. They, they do what they call check-in at each of the facilities every week. They do a check-in. They check in with each other. It's a support mechanism. It's tremendous to know that you're not the only one struggling. They watch each other's children. They encourage each other. They cry on each other's shoulders. They build each other up. It's tremendously helpful. And then to watch some of the other, presently, the independent living senior ladies share a dining room with the families. And it's, it's just wonderful to see the encouragement, the relationship, children who may have been estranged from grandparents, just learning how to be around old people like me. So it's, it's great to see. It's tremendous.
And then I think I'm getting ahead of you, but one of the things I appreciate about this community, I've had several people ask me, where are places I can serve, or what can I do to help? What you're talking about here is just a tip of the iceberg of what you guys have, because you really do go from crisis to restoration. Is there some information out there that we could get to, like, the public here tonight, just to say, hey, if you want to donate, volunteer, that type of thing, where would be the best place for them to look for that?
I would say our website, cooperativeministry.com. If you type in Cooperative Christian Ministry in this area, you're going to get our website. And just go there and look at volunteering opportunities. Otherwise, visit, visit a facility that you know to be CCM and ask. And many of our churches are very aware. Many churches in Kannapolis support Cooperative Christian Ministry and are engaged in different ways. So rest assured, we have many ways to be involved. At Caremore, and of course, Caremore served as a for-profit entity for a lot of years and did some wonderful work. But one of the challenges of assisted living that is out there today in society is it tends to feel lonely to some folks. There's just not enough staff to visit, and unfortunately, many of our residents don't see family as often as they like. But we live in a world of volunteers. And one of the things that we can bring to that environment is people who want to serve, and people who want to serve in a capacity that really allows them to express their, their love for people and their faith. And we bring that to the environment in such a way that can overcome some of the challenges of assisted living. I believe that, and I shared this with Madison, who is our administrator, I believe very soon, when the world realizes what's happening at Caremore in the multi-generational campus and the engagement that we're building into this campus, and even some of the changes we're making in the physical structure, these are going to be the most sought-after beds in Cabarrus County for assisted living. And praise God for that.
Any questions? I'm sure you're with us?
I do, sir. Thank you. Most people who recognize Cooperative Christian Ministry recognize that we serve, we serve tens of thousands of people through our food pantries every year. And much of that happens at the Crisis Center in Concord on Country Club Drive, located behind the Carolina Mall, a location that was built in 1989 on a 40-year lease. And 40-year leases do come to an end. We're in year 37. And so we are recognizing that we will lose that property in three years. Now, logistically, with the, with the volumes that we're serving, the magnitude that our pantries are seeing, logistically, that location's a nightmare anyway, okay? But here's one, something I want you to hear. And you might see in your packages that there's also an image of the Rebuilders Campus that CCM is building on Cabarrus Avenue in Concord. We're creating quite a presence there, less than a mile from the Dream Center and a multiplied church in the Cornerfield Market, which is another large food pantry operation that does a great job. What I want you to hear, and some of you've heard this before, is that 435 Kannapolis home addresses visit that Crisis Center every month. When this, this document that some of you have was, was put together, the average was 436, and that was for a 15-month period that ended last March. When you look at the year 2025, the average is still 435. It's over 1,500 Kannapolis home addresses that visit the Crisis Center in Concord each year, averaging 435 households a month. There's one thing I want to call to your attention, and that is that that means the average visit, the average house, the households visit an average of three and a half times a year. Many believe that, that food pantries are abused, that people will go every single, they're allowed to go once a month. They can go 12 times a year, but they average going three and a half times a year. It's because folks are going to the pantry when they need it, when they need it to help them get through a month. It is not being taken advantage of. But 435 times every single month, a Kannapolis address shows up at the Crisis Center in Concord, a Crisis Center that's going away in three years. It's not logical for us to move it to the hub that we're creating on Cabarrus Avenue because the Cornerfield Market is right up the street. And I believe that we can best serve our community by creating a Kannapolis Service Center, so that these 1,500 households and perhaps more who can't get to the Crisis Center in Concord would have the opportunity, not only to have access to our full-time, the only five-day-a-week day and evening pantry in Cabarrus County, and they would have access to it. In our studies over the past year or two, what we've recognized is that there's an intersection on Cannon Boulevard at Jackson Park and Lane Street where the Walgreens and the CVS are located. That intersection has four quadrants. The U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA, has identified three of those four quadrants as food deserts. When you look at that location, sitting right there next to the intersection is College Station, I believe we call it, where the community college has the cosmetology school, and there's a Dollar General, and there's a shopping center there. That shopping center, when you look at all of the requirements necessary to have a high-volume food pantry, whether it's traffic flow, parking, bus access, and many of the other things that are necessary, that location checks every box. College Station is a property that the city owns. There is vacant space in there now. Our plan is to have a Kannapolis Service Center before August of 2029, when we lose the one we have. But I believe we could make that happen this year. And so what I'm going to be asking the City of Kannapolis to consider, there are a number of, of open spaces at College Station. There are a couple, or is at least one, that is available and large enough for a high-volume food pantry that we would run like a little grocery store. And I'm asking the, the City of Kannapolis to consider, if you'll provide the space, we will feed your people. It's about 4,200 square feet. The rent rate, the rental rate on that would put the cost of that at about $70,000 a year. This year, CCM budgeted $70,000 to purchase groceries to supplement the donations that come in. I need to spend that $70,000 on groceries, and I'd love to partner with the city once again. The space is quite adequate. CCM would handle any modifications to the space, pay the utility bills, and manage the facility full-time. We would have our food pantry operation there. We would also have access to our financial assistance operations, which provide rental and utility assistance to residents throughout Cabarrus County and Southern Rowan County, as all of Kannapolis. And we can do this in the short term. And I would welcome the opportunity to come back and, and talk with you and give you more detail. In your package, I would like to show you one thing. In your package, on the back page, there is a map with three stars. The little blue icons, if you will, represent the Kannapolis area addresses, just the Kannapolis addresses that visit our Crisis Center at the Carolina Mall, which is represented by a green star. The green star represents our current Crisis Center, which is going away by August of 2029. To relocate that to the hub that we're creating in Concord, which is the brown star, adds another four and a half miles and really takes it out of the reach of some of our, some of our Kannapolis neighbors. College Station is represented by the orange star in the center of all those Kannapolis addresses with access from Lane Street, Cannon Boulevard, and Jackson Park. I think this is a great opportunity to have another win for the people of Kannapolis. And I look forward to answering any questions and sitting down with you and talking about how we can partner together to make this happen. We can do this, and we can do it well. And we would welcome the opportunity to do it with you.
Want questions now?
Welcome questions now, yes.
Do we have any?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Ed, how big is your facility at, behind Carolina Mall?
It's 8,300 square feet. It includes a 3,300-square-foot warehouse. We would not move the warehouse. We're creating a bulk food warehouse on Cabarrus Avenue. It also includes a large lobby that served a different- It also includes a large lobby that served a different model of financial assistance that we used to do. So, the square footage we're looking at at College Station is 4,200 square feet and accomplishes all that we need it to in order to run it like a small grocery store, which means we would deliver two or three times a week from the warehouse to the back of the store. This particular space already has a back of the store in order to be able to supply the shelves and, and meet the needs that we need to meet.
Ed, I think, I think remembering the conversation we had recently, that there was discussion that there was an outcry in the last weather issue we had, that we need a warming center. Could this place double as a warming center when things got really bad out there?
The, the 4,200 square feet of food pantry could not. It'll, it'll be full, like a grocery store. You have other available spaces in that shopping center.
Right.
That I believe could serve as a warming center. I believe the shopping center has a tremendous potential to be a nonprofit service center. There are other nonprofits who serve our neighbors who need space. I think CCM, I can't speak for my Board of Directors, but I believe CCM would be willing to collaborate with others to create something very positive there, that not only a warming center, but in the summertime, a cooling center. And then, there are other seasons of the year where it could be used for other public use, whether it's public meetings, or meeting space, or other things. I think it lends itself very well.
Okay. All right, council, where do we want to go with this? Dean?
Thank you. I'm hearing two opportunities here that would certainly serve our city, first, as the distribution center that I'm assuming would operate five days a week at least.
It currently does, and we don't have any plans to change the model. What we would do is make sure that we're serving the needs of Kannapolis. If we need to alter those days or alter those hours, that's what we would do.
And also, the mayor and I and Ms. Berry have been working with the group for probably the past year with emphasis on a warming center and a cooling center, and so this sounds like it would serve dual purposes. And so, I'm familiar with College Station through my connection with the Community College. And so, I would just like to ask that we do is whatever our due diligence is to work with CCM to determine the feasibility of, of moving in that direction.
All right, anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Daval.
Ed, appreciate the, appreciate the conversation tonight and your presentation. It was good to see as much progress that's been done there, and of course, the one in Concord, I drive by it, and it's, it's amazing how that mill is transforming. That's a key piece of Concord that, that desperately needed help, and, and you're helping deliver that. I know years ago, when you talked about other nonprofits could be located there, years ago, there was an effort, I think it was called Under One Roof, and that was going to utilize the old Target building at Exit 58 as a hub for a lot of nonprofits, Red Cross, United Way. I don't, I'm not sure, I don't remember about CCM. I think you were a part of that, and many other nonprofits that are in Cabarrus County. So, and that didn't come to fruition. There was a lot of work spent on that. So, this, you know, if, if we looked at it kind of holistically, if there's opportunities there, if we're going to keep, number one, if we're going to keep that shopping center, then we need to look at opportunities to help the other nonprofits as well, kind of be, you know, a fair, fair footing there, if we can offer multiple services at one place. Because I agree, it's a great location, parking is great, access is great to it, so look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you. Yeah, and just for clarity and fairness, what I'm committing to you is to create a food pantry and financial crisis center. I can't deliver a warming center today, but I can tell you that CCM will collaborate with others, as we do in every aspect of our work, to help leverage our platform, our experience, and our resources to help make it happen.
Okay. Back to what Ms. Dixon suggested, and I would think that we need to ask the staff to do, help us do some due diligence here. And Ms. Long, if you could help us with this, and then we will begin doing our due diligence. How about that?
Yes, sir. I thank you for that.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Thumbs up? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, I believe we're now on Mr. Payne, and so we can finally get to you. I'm sorry.
You're good. So, after reading the staff report on this budget amendment, from my understanding, there's excess funds from the fire station remodels with that capital fund project, and especially after our retreat with our one-time expenditures and how we have some big public safety one-time expenditures coming up, I think it'd be a good idea to transfer those funds to the public safety line, more specifically, fire, so that way it could help pay for some of those one-time expenditures.
Ms. Jones, I saw you making your way up here. You want to make the journey complete and come on up and share some stuff with us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I believe at your workspace, there's a revised budget amendment, or no? Just with the mayor? Okay. So, there is a revised budget amendment that'll make that move. So, if y'all choose to vote as necessary, we'll sign it, and we can make that happen.
So moved.
A motion here, you have a second? Okay, we got seconds, thirds, we got it all over the place. Okay, we got a fourth. All in favor? All opposed? I think we're good. Okay. All right. Now, Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
No, sir. I don't have any reports for you this evening. I just will, I'll give an announcement, general announcement, if you will, though. NCDOT has some planned closures of 29, and as they're doing the repairs to MLK Bridge, one of those closures is tonight. They have several days that they'll be closing in the night. So, in the evenings, they'll close, I think it's eight or nine o'clock this evening, and that, that'll be closed, and then they'll open early the next morning. So, just so everybody knows, there will be a little bit of inconvenience, so, but they are making progress on the bridge improvements.
Is this both lanes, or just one southbound?
They, I know that there, is it the southbound lane only, Richard?
Northbound first, southbound the next.
Okay, so they're alternating.
It won't be at the same time?
Not at the same time.
Okay.
Eight to six.
Eight to six, or I think it was six o'clock they were going to open back up, is what it was. So, it was, again, a little minor inconvenience as we're making progress on that project. I know that many of you have asked about it, and this is that progress that you wanted to see.
Okay. That's all you have?
That's it, sir.
All right, now, city council comments? Mr. Daval?
Just a couple of things that I'd like for this board to consider we didn't get to during the two days of retreat time, but we've had increasingly amount, amounts of people in our community talk about how it's hard to access the city's website for agendas and meetings. I've had many struggles with it myself. So, if we can look at revising that whole system and process, that would be great, and making the entire website more user-friendly, you know, there's just a lot of things that it's, that it needs, from knowing what's going on around town, to ease of access, to being able to find people's phone numbers and emails and things for departments. So, I'd love for us to look at doing that. The other thing is that as things progress downtown, whether or not we do MSDs and other things, I would like for us to reengage with the North Carolina Main Street program and get those folks back in. You know, years ago, there was a big, you know, big effort by them to be a part, and they were, they were happy to be a part of what we were doing, but I think it would behoove us to bring those guys back in and talk to us and see if we're still eligible for that program to help us with downtown.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
First, I want to say I second everything what Ryan said there. And so, I recently had the honor of doing a ride-along with our Fire and Police Departments, and I can honestly say I walked away absolutely amazed. Seeing firsthand the dedication, professionalism, and heart our first responders bring to their work every single day gave me an even deeper appreciation, deeper appreciation for what they do for our city. The long hours, the unpredictable calls, and the calm under pressure is something you truly have to witness up close to fully understand. I am incredibly grateful for the men and women who serve and protect our community. We are blessed to have such outstanding public safety professionals, and I would strongly encourage the rest of council to take the opportunity to do a ride-along as well. There is no substitute for the firsthand perspective, and it makes us even better leaders, so.
Ms. Berry?
Okay. I just wanted to ask, in, at a future meeting pretty soon, I would like an update on Kannapolis crime. Again, I watch that police blotter every night. I see there are problem spots. It seems like Lane Street, all the way down to 85, has become really crazy here lately. Downtown, I'd like to know, I don't see as much about downtown, but I'd like to know what's going on, if things have improved, and did we ever decide to implement curfews for younger youngsters that come down there, or, or what we're doing and where we're at right now?
Come on ahead, ma'am.
I wrote it down. I have a couple of things I just wanted to share with what's been happening. Over the past two weeks, I, I've had a wonderful opportunity to represent Kannapolis and the citizens here in regional, local settings. As your delegate, Kannapolis was represented at the Centralina Delegates Meeting. We set some regional priorities and did the placeholder budget for fiscal year '27. I know as Kannapolis grows, we need to remain present and engage in the conversations that shape the transportation, funding, and long-term planning. And my focus is really to go there, to get those coordinations together and benefit, bring back what would benefit our residents and really protect our local interests. I was also able to participate with Ms. Dixon here. I won't take much time about that, but we were able to go to Greensboro, and we've got some great training from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, working on ethics and governance practices, but I'll, I know she liked it a lot, so I don't want to take her thunder on that. Saturday, we did have our budget retreat, and it was just an honor to serve with all of you guys. That was the funnest all-day meeting I think I've ever had, so thank you so much for that. Thank you for the staff that came. The thoughtful preparation and disciplined discussion was really essential to responsible stewardship as we plan for the future. I also want to thank this council for signing the thank-you card that I was able to give to Congressman Addison McDowell, to thank him for the project that Mr. Melton brought up last week with the funding that we received from the federal funding to help with the Rogers Lake and Oakwood intersection there. So, thank you guys for doing that. He was very appreciative that we were together and signed that card for him, so thank you so much. And then, last night, I had the honor of attending the crossover service at a local church here that include many of the pastors and churches from our bridge project. It was a wonderful evening. It really was. I, it was an honor to be there. I'm always amazed and just, I'm just amazed at the wonderful people we have in Kannapolis, and I'm so thankful that we have that partnership with our faith leaders. That's very important in reaching our community, just like having the partnerships with federal government, or state government, and getting those things done. So, you know, every discussion, every partnership, every decision really ultimately comes back to serving the people of Kannapolis. So, I just, I'm so thankful that we're going to continue in this direction. Thank you.
One else? Well, thank all of you for those comments. Mr. Daval, I believe it's time for you to do your thing and get us into closed session.
Yes. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3 to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second? Ms. Dixon, is anybody in favor, raise of hands? Thank you. We are adjourned and into closed session. Appreciate your comment.